Hi everyone, thanks for joining us today. My name's Madeline Cardos and I'm the Marketing and Communications Associate here at GuideStar. Welcome to our lovely work session. We're excited to have you all join us today to show your GuideStar nonprofit profile some love. Hopefully you all had a chance to complete our introductory poll. Let you finish up there for a moment. Okay, so it looks like the majority of you are interested in how to reach a larger online audience. We'll be explaining how to do this later on by maximizing your GuideStar nonprofit profile and earning a seal of transparency. Then up next, about 31% of you are interested in how your profile is the heart of more than 200 philanthropic websites and applications. And today we'll be focusing on Facebook and Amazon Smile. Last but not least, we're going to teach you how to personalize your nonprofit profile by doing a quick activity where we'll upload photos and videos directly to your profile. So, a quick note before we move on, we'll be live tweeting during this work session, so feel free to contribute to the conversation by using the hashtag #showyourprofilesonelove. Since today's event will be interactive, I want to take some extra time to go over logistics. Right now, and for the first portion of today's event, we're going to be working in the GoTo Webinar platform that you've joined us in. Later, we're going to encourage you to jump right into your organization's profile, so please, take this time to open up a new internet browser and log into your profile. This will prepare you for our activity later on. Okay, so some more logistics. To submit a question, just look on the control panel off to the side of your screen, you'll find a questions box there. Just type a question and send away. If you see only the questions header but not the box, select the arrow to the left to enable the questions box. Don't worry, we'll be pausing for questions throughout the webinar, so please, if you think of one, just send it away. Our hope is to answer all of your questions today during this event, but if we're unable to get to yours, please rest assured that we will reach out to you directly with an answer to get you pointed in the right direction. So yet again, send your questions our way. Now, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jasmine Morrow, who's our Director of Nonprofit Strategy here at GuideStar. Jasmine will give you a brief overview of the GuideStar Seals of Transparency, and she'll show you how your information from your nonprofit profile powers charitable websites and applications such as Facebook and Amazon Smile.
Hi everyone, thanks so much for having me. I'm really excited to share with you just some more about the GuideStar profiles. So this is the 990. This is probably familiar to most of you because it's the tax form that we as nonprofits file every year. And at GuideStar, a huge part of our work is digitizing these tax forms and making them available to the public. And so that includes funders, individual donors, other nonprofits, and more. And it tells a really important story. What it doesn't tell is an organization's entire story. So it would be like trying to, any of us, you or I, introduce ourselves to someone and leading with our last year's tax return. It just doesn't tell the parts that are most important. So we encourage nonprofits to add their narrative, things like programs and their accomplishments. After all, the heart of the nonprofit is the work that they do, not their finances. So when an organization completes a 990, they're automatically given a GuideStar nonprofit profile. So if it's never claimed, it only tells that financial story. So that's 7 million annual visitors who are potentially seeing an incomplete story. Now, we've worked hard to design a profile that reflects a more well-rounded story. And so you're seeing some of those elements now, and it includes things like programs and operations and practices. And we'll review more of those later in this presentation and how you can fill those in, but this is what gives your profile a robust story. And so what's important to remember is that most of the information that's here comes directly from the nonprofits. You are the expert on the work that you do, and the nonprofit profile and the seals of transparency are one way to share that work. So the seals of transparency are the various levels of information that you can share as a nonprofit on GuideStar. The higher the seal level, the more complete your profile and your story are. They're like a staircase, so you earn the seals sequentially. Madeline's going to share in more detail briefly, but for now, I'll just give you a little overview. Bronze seal means that you've shared basic information about your programs and your mission. Silver is up-to-date financial information. Gold is where you share a narrative of your vision and your goals. And lastly, platinum is where you share the measures of your work. What do you track to know that you're on the right track? So just thinking about this bigger picture, at GuideStar, we think a lot about the role of data and information in the social sector, and what influences donations and decisions and policy and more. And what does it, is that data and that information and the ways that people process those. So a huge part of our work is helping to ensure that information flows freely through the sector. So the parts I want to draw your attention to are just these couple. As a data hub, we aggregate information from a variety of sources, including even nonprofits, those who are served by the nonprofit, funders, and more. And so that's a more robust story and analysis that goes out to our audiences. Now, the 7 million users are on GuideStar each year, and we understand that that's not where all of your stakeholders are looking. So we have a robust network of partners who use GuideStar to power their own philanthropy. So now I want to talk to you a bit about those guys. Here is a sampling of our partners. You can see that there's a wide array, so it's from financial advisors to workplace giving, to individual donors, and more. And one of our newest partners that we're really excited to share with you is Facebook. So your nonprofit information and your profile is now accessible to a variety of individuals through the Facebook donations pages. But you can see that there is a wide array, so we've got 200-plus partners in our network. Next slide, please. So, when I say that we help to power philanthropy through other platforms, what does that look like? I wanted to give you just a few figures to help solidify this. So in a given year, through the Amazon Smile program, which is a point-of-sale giving program through amazon.com, they generated $1.2 million in charitable donations. In a given year, PayPal Giving Fund, which helps individual donors make donations directly through their PayPal accounts, generated $36 million in donations, thereabouts. And also in a given year, Fidelity Charitable, which financial advisors help their clients make informed charitable contributions, generated about $3.1 billion in charitable donations. Now, these are just a few, and granted, there are a few of our larger examples. This is a few of our network of more than 200 organizations whose philanthropy GuideStar helps to power. So here's a quick view of what that looks like on Facebook. So this knowledge panel on the right carries the organization's mission statement and a link directly to the nonprofit profile. So you can see that the top section is all about the person who's set up the donation page, kind of proving their worth, and then the goal, and then this bottom right is all about the nonprofit specifically, and it's a direct link to your profile on guidestar.org. And so next, another one that people are consistently asking about and that is really popular is Amazon Smile. And so they pull this information directly from your GuideStar nonprofit program. So you can see up top, it's the mission, then there's the categories of service, the programs, and the region served, and those are all pulled through your profile. Now, both of these examples show just a taste of the nonprofit. And would you provide more personalized information on your own website? Of course you would. But this is where donors who are potentially unfamiliar with the organization at all first see, and the first impression is vetted by GuideStar and by these other organizations, and it leads them back to you for that more full and robust view that you can get them. So I want to pause here for questions. Madeline's going to give you an in-depth walkthrough of how to do these things in just a second, but are there questions about anything I've covered so far?
Hi Jasmine, so it looks like one of the top questions I'm seeing is, do all organizations automatically have profiles on GuideStar?
That's a great question. So in general, the vast majority of organizations have profiles on GuideStar. So if you filed a 990, you more than likely have a profile on GuideStar because we digitize 990s. And so what you want to do to make sure that it's the most robust it can be is to go ahead and claim it. If you're a nonprofit who doesn't have a profile yet on GuideStar but would like one, so that's, say you're a really small organization that didn't yet file a 990, say you're a new organization that hasn't yet filed your taxes, or you're a church and they don't necessarily have to file 990s, you can always apply and show your nonprofit tax information and your status as a nonprofit and be listed on GuideStar as well.
All right, here's another question for you. Where do sites like Benevity and Good2Great fit in in all this?
That's a great question. I'm actually not specifically familiar with either of those two, so that's one I want to get back to you on, but overall, those tend to be sort of intermediary organizations that highlight nonprofits' work, and very often, we supply the general information about nonprofits for those.
All right, a few more questions for you. Will a recording of this session be available later?
That'll come to your email a little later, probably in a day or so.
And a few last questions here. How long does it take for information from GuideStar to go to Amazon Smile?
So right now, Amazon Smile does a data pickup about once a month. So once you update your information on GuideStar, that'll be available on your GuideStar profile immediately, but they will pick up the data in about a month.
Okay, so that's going to end our question segment for now, but don't worry, we'll stop a little bit later on in the webinar for questions as well, so please feel free to send them as you think of them. Thank you Jasmine. All right, now, before we launch into our live demo, I'm kind of curious which part of the updating process you're most curious about. So please take a few minutes to fill out this poll and let me know. All right, thanks for doing that. It looks like the majority of you are interested in how to share metrics and key results, so this will be the platinum seal of transparency, so I'll definitely spend a little bit more time on that. And it looks like next up, we have, a lot of people want to learn how to share their basic information, that will be the bronze seal of transparency. So I will focus largely on those two, but of course, I will not neglect the other ones, I'll go through those as well. Thank you guys for that. This now begins our live tutorial, so what I'm going to do here is actually jump into another tab. Here we go. Okay, so for an example, I'm going to start with the Goodwill Industries International Inc.'s GuideStar nonprofit profile. You can see it right here, and they are indeed at platinum. So we're just going to kind of go through this, and this is their public profile, so it's what anyone searching will see. So for starters, on the top right-hand corner, you will see the GuideStar Seal of Transparency. They are at platinum. Good for them, good job everybody. Now, this is the summary section, so this stems mostly from the bronze seal. You'll notice things such as mission statements, service areas, some quick contact information, as well as categorization. You'll notice some revenue expenses, some top funders, these also come from the silver section, but we will dive into that in a moment. All right, programs and results, so this definitely stems from the bronze seal, and it's really the most important part of your profile, and it's really the meat, and you want to spend a lot of time on this because you have the most control over what people see by showing them what you do. So this is where you put your programs. So first of all, this is a quick overview, so this is a quick summary of the impact you feel you're making, as well as some strategies to get there, and then we have your actual programs. So a best practice is to put three to five programs, your top three to five, and usually ones that are going to be around for a while, so not one that's only two weeks long, that'd be kind of crazy to keep up with. And so for each one, you usually just put a really quick description, so three to four sentences, and you can even put a space in between these guys, really make this visually appealing. And that's kind of an overall theme that you'll notice for GuideStar nonprofit profiles is to keep everything really, really short and sweet, so very concise, really bite-sized, because people are really scrolling, they're not really reading, so basically making everything really, really visually appealing. And you can see here, there's an option for categories, population served, and budget, so that's also great as well. Going down here, you'll notice program long-term success, program success, all these guys. After discussion with sector leaders and data distribution partners, we realized we actually needed to expand this section, so this turned into platinum. So please, when you're going through the bronze seal, no need to fill in these guys, please focus your efforts on platinum. Now, you're probably noticing on the right-hand side here, a few more items, so these guys are actually optional, and you'll kind of notice that the more optional items, they don't relate to a seal at all, are kind of found in this right-hand side kind of white column. Then the ones that do apply to a seal are kind of in the middle here. So just so you know, on the right-hand side, you'll see such things as annual reports, social media, funding needs, and then photos and videos will go here, which I will actually show you in just a moment, so just keep that in mind as I scroll through the rest of this. All right, so this is the platinum section, and platinum is a tangible way to show your key results from what you're doing, everything that you do to forward your mission. So you can kind of see the Goodwill's ones here, so number of clients served, and these are annual, so you'll notice annual totals. We usually recommend putting three to five metrics to start. Some can relate to your programs, as you can see, some can just kind of be overall metrics that relate to your organization in general. You can also select a target population, and of course, you're going to want to put some context, so always remember to put context. And here you go, we can actually just kind of skip on through this. Oh, here we are, look at these lovely metrics, lovely. All right, this is the gold seal. So the gold seal is made up of five charting impact questions. These were developed by BBD Wise Giving Alliance, Independent Sector, and GuideStar. It took us about a year and a half to come up with these guys, and basically, it really helps to flesh out your theory of change, you know, really discover your long-term goals, your strategies, how you're going to get there. This is really important, especially if you're applying for grants. This really shows what you're based on, where you're going, how you're going to get there. So don't worry, we'll dive into this a little bit later on in more detail, but for now, just keep in mind about the formatting of this section. So like I said before, you want to keep everything really, really short and sweet. So we're not asking you for an essay here, we're asking for, you know, two to three paragraphs, a few sentences each, and of course, putting a space in between each paragraph, really using that hard return. As the gold seal doesn't really have formatting, so just keep that in mind. Organization's key strategies, you can kind of see, so, oops, I kind of skipped this first one here, so what are you aiming to accomplish, key strategies for making this happen, capabilities for doing so, how do you know if you're making progress? And this is actually a really great bridge into the platinum seal. So this is where you're going to state, you know, kind of your long-term goal, like by 2020, we want to have X number of clients served, and then in platinum, you can show your year-by-year progression on how you're actually doing with realizing that goal. So just a quick tip on this one, and then last but not least, what have and haven't you accomplished so far. A general comment I usually get from people is, well, of course, I want to put what I have accomplished, but why would I put what I haven't? And my kind of tip for them is, well, it's great to show what you want to do, what you want to do in the future, what you're excited to accomplish, so that's definitely something you can do here. This is the financial section, this stems from the silver seal, and what you can do here is either upload an audited financial statement, yes, they have one, or you can enter in your basic information manually, which will show up. Just a quick tip, you can see where everything is populated from, so some of this stems from your IRS Form 990, makes these really lovely graphics, which I kind of really much love. And then going down here, you can see that some of these are self-reported, so this kind of balance sheet is self-reported. Okay. So that is the silver seal, super easy. Okay, so this last section here is operations, and this comes from the bronze seal mostly. Things you can find, first of all, principal officers, so CEO, executive directors, et cetera, their bio, and then a quick statement if they have one, some, whoa, a lot of members, we're going to keep going past these members, here we go. Highest-paid employees, governance, so board chair, board of directors on the right-hand side here, and then now we're getting to more optional sections, so this is the board leadership practices, so six yes or no questions based on how your board operates. Here we go, you can definitely look into those later. And now we're going to get into organizational staff and demographics, so this is definitely another way to be transparent. Yet again, this section is indeed optional, meaning it does not affect your ability to get a seal of transparency, however, it's still really great to show who makes up your organization, and it's also a really cool widget, which is pretty cool, so I definitely recommend checking this out as well. And then some notes, and then some contractors. So that is it, that is the entire public profile. I'm going to jump up to the top here, sorry if you're a little seasick, woo, and answer a few quick questions before I dive into how to update. So one of the questions is, how do I get started and claim my profile? So this is really easy to do, and don't worry, we're actually going to send you instructions on how to do so with our follow-up email after this webinar, so don't worry, but basically what you're going to do is create a GuideStar account, enter in an email address that's associated with your organization if you have one, and then what you're going to do is click Update Nonprofit Profile, which will take you to a page that says Get Started Now. So go click Get Started Now, enter in your EIN, and then you will request permission to manage your profile, and our lovely stakeholder support team will approve you within one to do business days. So that is the claim process, and yet again, we will be sending you video instructions on how to do so, so just hold tight for those guys. Another major question, how much does it cost to update? Totally free. All of this is free, every single seal, so no worries about that one. Is participation in Amazon Smile automatic? Yes and no, so you have to come into your profile and claim it, fill out your basic information, and publish that. Once you do that, it'll be sent to Amazon Smile. So that is perfect, and yet again, if you do need to opt-in, if for some reason you are not a part of our database, all you have to do is email outreach@guidestar.org. Okay, thank you for submitting your questions, guys. I'm going to hop into how to actually update your profile now, so please continue to keep asking questions, I will get to them, you know, when there's a natural pause, so please keep asking. Okay, here we go here. So in order to update, you're going to, first of all, you're always going to want to sign in, you can see I'm already signed in, then you're going to click Update Nonprofit Profile, you can always find it at the top here, top of the webpage, here you go. Perfect. Okay, you'll see this screen, all you need to do is either click Organization Name or Edit Form to go into our editing tool. Okay. And by the way, we're going to be using GuideStar's profile, so you can kind of see the backend little snippet. Okay, so this is your summary page. I'm going to kind of show you all the tools along these light blue banner at first, so this is your summary page, if you click Summary, it'll redirect right here, we'll let it load for a moment here, it likes to think. Okay, so you'll see your organization name, you'll see your progress bar, so this shows you how you're doing for each of the seals, and like we said, it is a step system, so in order to get to silver, you have to complete bronze before. Whereas gets to gold, you have to complete both bronze and silver, so you can see kind of how you're doing for each seal. Okay, things you can do on your summary page, first of all, you can update your main address really quick, just click the blue pencil, here you go, we are in Williamsburg. All right. Give it a moment to think. All right, there we go. Okay, right here, this is where you can see what seal you're at, and then if, for example, you are at bronze, if you click Update, it'll take you to the silver seal, so it's just kind of a quick, a quick jump to the next area that you're going to need to fill out. Amazon Smile, so if you click Update, this will show you exactly what we transmit to Amazon Smile. To be honest, most of it comes out of the bronze seal, a tiny bit from the silver seal, so if you update and get both bronze and silver, those will automatically be updated and will send to Amazon Smile. So usually just recommend doing both bronze and silver, so you don't have to worry. Then we have Assigning Profile Managers. This is really great, if you would like to assign as many profile managers as you desire, you of course can, as you can see, we have about a million, okay, that was an exaggeration, but we actually, we have a lot, so let me go through these guys, I'm sorry if you just got a little seasick there. So all you have to do is enter in an email address, send them a quick note, and add them as a manager. One caveat is that they must have a GuideStar account already created with the email address that you're sending this to. So just make sure they have a GuideStar account, send them an email, and then they'll become a manager. So that is very, very nice. Another best practice is to make a general email address, such as info@yournonprofit.org, a manager for your account, just in case everyone's sick for a week or there's tons of turnover, you'll have access through at least one account, so that's just kind of a general tip there. All right, we're going to go back in, here we go. All right, so back to the summary page, I kind of skipped out there. All right, last but not least on the summary page is Donation Reporting. So you can get a donate button on your profile, I can show you guys how to do that momentarily, and it is free, that was one of our questions in fact. And you can, if you click Update, you'll figure out who's been donating, when they've been donating, and how much, so that's pretty nice. Okay, so that's the summary page. Now you're like, hey, how do we update? So there are two ways to update. The first is use this kind of left-hand side mini-menu, so if you click it, it's also a dropdown, so you can see, all of these data fields are indeed clickable, so if I went and clicked Fiscal Address, it would take me straight there. The second way to do it is to click Update Your Profile to the right of Summary. Here we go. There we are, okay, and you'll notice that these guys are exactly the same, the only difference is once you click Update Your Profile, this is a giant scroll functionality while this one is a dropdown, so it's really your preference. I tend to prefer the left-hand side mini-menu, mostly because I like to say the word mini-menu, so I will be using this for the remainder of the webinar, but if this, if you do like to do Update Your Profile, of course, please use this functionality. Okay, so whenever you update your profile and you click Save, which we're going to do later on, you're going to get this little button at the bottom. Here we go, it says Publish Changes Now. So this is always the final step in updating your GuideStar nonprofit profile, so yeah, again, you click Save, it saves for your personal use, you can come back in, you can edit, you can do whatever you'd like, but then, when you click Publish Changes Now, you'll be directed to our Confirm and Publish page. If for some reason you're not seeing this, let's say you Xed out of it, you can always go up here and click Confirm and Publish, and that will take you straight to the page. For those of you who just asked me, where do you find that donate button? You can actually find it on this Confirm and Publish page. So this is your final step. Program Terms, you're going to certify everything's up to date, you are who you say you are, and you accept our terms of use. Then we have Options for Sharing. So the first one is Yes, you want your information to be sent to our partners like Amazon Smile and Facebook, Network for Good, Just Give, so you probably want to check this one. The second one is to add a donate button to your profile, so there you go. And then last but not least, you're going to click Finish and Publish, and this will, in fact, I'll do this right now, because why not? Here we go. This will publish everything. So you'll most likely see your changes within 24 to 48 hours. Some things take five minutes, some things take five hours, so you know, come back within a day and see if it's been updating. So go, say, hey, thanks for updating, and you will then get the Donate Button on your profile. Okay. Very nice, very nice. So a really quick question before I dive into bronze here is, how long does it take to complete all of these seals? Because we're a small nonprofit, we really don't have time. Not to worry, bronze will take you less than 30 minutes, maybe even 15, if you have all the information together. Silver will definitely take you about 15 minutes. And then Gold and Platinum take a little bit longer in terms of thinking. So when you talk to your board, you talk to your leadership team. But if you have all that information together, you can do those two probably within, you know, 30 minutes, 30 minutes each or an hour. So it really shouldn't take too long. If you have everything together, you can probably sit down and fill this out within a few hours. So not too horrible. So really quickly here, before I jump into bronze, you're going to see Benefits and Rewards. If you click here, you'll see all the full benefits and rewards offered to you. These are the Platinum benefits. Once you hit bronze, you will see the benefits and rewards for bronze. And when you, you know, go up the seals, you'll get more and more benefits and rewards. Two to be aware of, the GuideStar Participation Logo and Widget. Here it is, in all its glory. So this is the widget that you can put on your organization's website to show the fact that you have a seal. And if people click on it, it goes directly back to your profile, which is kind of nice. The other thing is the Outreach Toolkit. So this, these are all sample press release materials. So tweets, Facebook posts, LinkedIn posts, you name it, we've already written them for you. So if you want to celebrate the fact that you have a new seal, go ahead and use this section. We also have high-resolution images of the logos as well. So definitely come here. Okay. Last but not least is View Public Profile. This is a really great button to use, especially when you're making updates. And I usually recommend people to keep it open while they're updating, so you can see what your public profile looks like. And when you're making updates, it just makes it a little bit easier, so you can kind of see the formatting. So this is our public profile. And we're actually going to, there you go, you'll see a little bit. Okay. So just a quick tip to keep that guy open. All right. Now we're going to dive into it. So I know someone did ask me about Amazon Smile and what all you need to complete. All you need to do is basic information. We're going to dip in really fast. Okay. And you'll notice that the only things with the red asterisks are required for this section. The rest are going to be optional. So all you need is your organization name, your EIN, and then your address. And that's all you need for Amazon Smile. The rest of this is indeed optional, and you can see this here, it says optional. And a quick tip here, you can actually click these guys, and they'll fold up, which might save you some room. So you can go through here and click all these guys. And I won't do that for sake of time, but that is just kind of a quick tip. So that's all you need to do, and then as long as you publish your information, it will be sent. You can also see when your profile was last published on the bottom of the webpage here. So you can see, I just published, so it was published today, which is perfect. Okay. Here we go. So let's dive into bronze. Like I said, the bronze seal takes less than 30 minutes. It's really basic information. It's kind of stuff you most likely already have on hand. So you can kind of follow along with me, either using this mini-menu or in the actual main area itself. So who's the primary person the public should contact? So we have our Media Outreach Manager, Jackie. She is right here. Then we have our leader. His quick bio, yet again, putting a space in between paragraphs and keeping these really short and sweet. A co-leader, and yet again, these are optional, you can just whoop, close them up. All right, a statement from your leader, if they have one. Board, oops, staff, there we go, board chair. Board members, this is optional. Mission Statement, so just a really quick mission statement, you know, one to two sentences, if you've got a shorter one on hand. Your geographic area served, here you go. And then some details as to the area that you serve. You know, if you're local, tell us what county. If you're state, you know, and tell us which state and which parts, et cetera. And just keep it really quick. All right, here's the meat of it, is your programs. So like we said, you want to put three to five programs. Give them a budget, a category, if you have one, is usually very generic, a population served, and you're good to go. So three to five programs, and that is kind of it. Then we have categorization. These are keywords. So if you were to Google your organization, or actually, if you were to Google five keywords, what would bring up your organization? So you can see that we have nonprofit, giving, philanthropy, charities, PRIs. So that's what you're going to want to put in here. Then we have NTEE codes. These guys are self-reported, so what you're going to do is basically pick the one that most applies to your organization, as well as a sub-code. If you feel like, you know, one code really doesn't describe what you do, you can also pick two more, and just be sure to fill in the sub-codes for each one. Otherwise, the system kind of gets angry. Okay. And last but not least, a spot for your website, which we of course recommend. So that's the bronze seal, and this is your basic information. It's pretty straightforward. If you kind of gather all of this together and sit down and do it, you can do it pretty quickly. So I'm going to move on unless anyone has any questions. I'll wait for a few moments here, but pretty straightforward. Okay. So let's dive into silver. Silver is extremely easy to complete. Whoop, here we go, it's good, it's happier. It's an either-or section. You can either upload an audited financial statement, or you can fill out the fields below. So all you need is your most recent Form 990 for that. Okay. So you can upload an audit, as you can see here, all of ours. Go, Galman, Rosenberg, and Friedman, nice job, everybody. Then we have the manual part. So if you don't have an audited financial statement, please do not worry. Just grab your most recent Form 990 and look at Page 1 and the top of Page 2. Everything on those pages will fill in this section. So you don't have to be an accountant to do this. We're just asking you for the fiscal year. Some quick revenues, so all we require is contributions, gifts, and grants, and the total revenue. But usually, you just want to make sure that they total expenses. So program administration and total expenses. Some people ask, what's the difference between program and administration? And that is, program is all the costs that relate to your programs. So everything, so for example, the people you pay to run your programs versus administration, this would be more like HR costs, accounting. So it doesn't directly relate to one of your programs, but it is kind of more of an internal cost. Okay. Assets and liabilities, so this is pretty straightforward. It's usually on the bottom of Page 1 of your Form 990 or the top of Page 2. And just assets, liabilities, and then subtract the two for net assets or fund balance. Okay. There are two optional sections here. So the first one is Funding Sources. This is really great if you've just received a grant from a foundation, or perhaps you have, you know, a wealth of individuals who are contributing to your cause. It's a really great way to either honor those individuals, the group of individuals, or that foundation. So you can list three of your sources here. It's very prominent on your profile, so you definitely want to fill it out. Okay. And then Funding Needs. So if you guys have any funding needs, you can definitely put them here. So quick one to two sentences as to what you're looking for, and then you can list out your needs and the amount. So that is silver. That is perfect. Okay. Jumping into gold here. Here we go. So gold, like I said, is made up of these five Charting Impact questions. We kick off the gold section with an impact summary. So this is optional. Please don't spend too long here. Three to five sentences is great on what, you know, the impact you feel you're trying to make and the strategies you're doing to get there. And then we have the questions themselves. So here we go. We have, what is your organization aiming to accomplish? Key strategies for making this happen? Capabilities, so you know, do you have a really strong leadership team? Great finances, stable finances, a wide group of volunteers? You know, what makes you capable for doing the above? Then we have, how do you know you're making progress? So for these, we usually recommend doing your top three indicators. Giving yourself a goal, you know, by 2020, we want to have 100,000 nonprofits updating their GuideStar profiles. And then in the platinum section, listing year by year, how you're doing to reach that goal. Okay. What have and haven't you accomplished so far? So a general tip for this section is, if you've done any, you know, grant applications recently, any type of appeals to donor documents, any strategic analysis, all of those documents will contain the information necessary to complete gold. So you've done this before, you don't have to reinvent the wheel here. All you have to do is gather those documents, get them together, and then put them in the form that best fits, you know, this section. So one to two kind of quick paragraphs. So really just kind of mush them, mush them into these two paragraphs. And that's it, that's gold. So you are golden if you complete this section. Okay. So I'm not seeing any questions on gold at the moment here, so I'm actually going to jump into platinum. Here we go. Okay. So this is the platinum section, and you guys are probably going to see a slightly different-looking page. So what I'm going to do is direct you to, here we go. GuideStar.org/platinum. So definitely come here if you guys have any questions. And for starters, you're going to find the Common Results Catalog here. Here we go. Here we go. Okay. So this is our Common Results Catalog. It's a giant list of metrics prepared for you to use for the platinum section. It's split up by subsection here, and all of these are clickable. So if I went and clicked on animals, whoop, it would take me right there. So it's kind of nice. Of course, do not feel the need to stay within a subsection if you are, you know, church, but you happen to have an animal program. You know, of course, please use these metrics if you find one that's fitting. You'll notice a very common format, so number of blank who blank. You know, number of animal adoptions, number of animals rescued. So we just recommend that you please stick to this format in order to make your metrics more comparable. I'm kind of going through here, you'll see, they're all very similar. For the platinum section, we actually only require one metric with one year's worth of data. However, we recommend putting three to five to start, so three to five metrics, and then three to five years' worth of data, as you could see on the Goodwill page. Okay. So I'm actually going to hop out of here. Hopefully, you've all have kind of seen this, but this is definitely available to you. So just go to guidestar.org/platinum, click on Common Results Catalog, and this will pop up. Fun fact, 71% of organizations have found a metric from the catalog. So it's most likely that you'll find one as well. If for some reason, and here we go, I'll actually show you how to do this. If for some reason you aren't finding a metric that fits your organization, you can always create your own, which I will show you in just a moment here. So here we go. You can search by keyword. So for example, if I put in the word kid, it'll bring up, kind of does some word association for you. So children, teen, adult. So if you get kind of a wonky result, it's probably because of the keyword search. Or you can filter by service category, or you can filter by category. So for example, if you want arts and culture, and then you put in, you know, whoops. There we go. Total number of field trips, you can kind of go through that. So arts and culture and education, there you go. Okay. Here we are. So if you aren't finding one that works for your organization, just come down here, click Can't Find a Metric, Add Your Own, so you can put in, you know, number of children who like eating donuts. I know, this is a very interesting example, but you would definitely stick to this format, number of blank who blanks, the number of children who like eating donuts, and say, yes, I understand this is a custom metric. So of course, please remember to click that box, and then you say, hey, add metric, here you go. It's going to give you some similar metrics. You can see here, and I love this one, number of children who have skills necessary to maintain personal health. And I say, no, we're not talking about that. We are talking about children who like eating donuts. So say, use my custom metric, children who like eating donuts. Then you have the metric, and it will add it indeed. So it is right down here, number of children who like eating donuts. Okay. So then, moving on, what you're going to do is press Continue. Here we go, and I'm actually going to scroll on down here past our real metrics, and click Add Details. Okay, so this is perfect. Okay, so here's our metric. And like I said, you only need one year's worth of data and one metric to get platinum. However, we recommend putting at least three years' worth. And in fact, you can put as many years by clicking Add a Year, all the way back to the year 2000. So if you have that information, please put it. Of course, you can put context. So here at GuideStar, we say, no stories without numbers, no numbers without stories. So please explain, explain your metrics. So for example, 2016 was, you know, kind of a bum year compared to the year before. You can say, hey, you know, everyone was, was eating kale. None of the kids were eating their donuts. So be sure to explain what your metrics are. And in fact, if you just kind of want to, you know, give an explanation, what is a donut? You know, is it round? Is it, you know, what exactly am I talking about? You can give some context. Okay. You can relate your metric to one of your programs. You can do Target Population Served. And finally, these are, you're ready to display. So yes, you're ready to display. No, do not display, and but note that it's no longer tracked. So this would be for, if you have some really good stuff, you know, from 10 years ago, but you, and you really want to show it, you can click this, and it will just, you know, it'll note it's no longer tracked, so no one's looking for 2017, you know, when that comes back. So you'd click Yes, Display, and then Save. There you go. And then you can see it. So there it is, that is platinum. So I know I went through that kind of quickly, but you know, it's not too hard of a process. Usually, what we recommend is to kind of use this process. So it's three steps. Number one, identify publicly shared metrics. So go to your website, look at pamphlets, you know, anything that you hand out to people, and see what you're providing. Then what you can do is kind of get three to five metrics that relate to your programs, and one to three that relate to your organization as a whole, and then narrow down the list until you have your top three to five metrics, get final approval, and then go for it. Then you just input them here. So that was really quick. And let me take a look at the questions coming in. It sounded like we had a few. So let's see. So how does this expand your online audience? So when you get to gold or platinum, you actually get twice as many views compared to other profiles. And we have seven million unique users, so it's pretty important to get to the highest seals of transparency in order to really reach more people. It also looks a whole lot better. Those who are searching tend to view those with higher seals as well. So that's just kind of a quick note. Okay. So I'm going to, let's see, hop back into our presentation here. Okay. Whoops. Okay. So for some reason, it's giving me some grief. Okay. Here we are. So a quick recap. The bronze seal is basic information. It's so you can be found. So it's like taking out an ad in the phone book, your name, your email address, et cetera. The silver seal is so you can grow trust. This is your basic financial information. The gold seal is all about goals and strategies, so you can tell others about your work. And platinum's all about progress and results, so you can show the change that you are making. This is perfect. Okay. So up next, what we're going to do is a quick activity, so how to upload photos. So please take this time to open up your profile, log in, sign in, and I'll give you just a moment to do so, just in case you, you need this time. And while you're doing that, I'll answer one quick question. Someone asked, are fees taken out of the donations by GuideStar? So no, they are not. The Donate Button is completely free for nonprofits. What we do is we use two services. One is named Kimbia, the other one is BK Foundation. Kimbia takes, I believe, a 99 cent fee from the donation, and the K Foundation takes a 3.99% fee from the donation. So it all comes from the donation, it is never a cost to you. So that is just kind of some tips on that. Okay, hopefully you all have had time to log in. All right. Here we go. So I'm going to go ahead.[1763.29] So I'm going to go ahead, go ahead and click update nonprofit profile at the top of the webpage. Then you're going to go ahead and click organization name. And be sure to have your photo ready. We're going to upload some photos now, so photos. And I'll also show you how to upload videos too. But for now, let's just do photos. Okay. So we're going to go to social and media outreach and then photos. And I will slow down a bit just in case we have a slight delay. Okay, perfect. So scrolling down here, you'll see we have already a lot of photos, but I will add another one. So you'll probably just see this. So you're going to choose a file. Hopefully, you've picked a photo that follow these constraints. Usually, you'll get an error message if it's too large, so please keep that in mind. Okay, so what we're going to do here is we're going to click choose file. There we go. This is the photo I desire. This is our CEO. And I'm going to upload it, click this little bar, and then click save. There it goes. All right. So hopefully you guys followed along with me. I'm going to scroll down here, back to our photos, make sure it showed up. And here it is, here it is, looking great. Okay. So hopefully you followed along with me. Not, not too painful. So of course, I didn't ask you to grab a video today, but let me just show you how to do so in case you have a few videos that you want to put. So the reason why we ask you to, to upload photos and videos is because it gives your profile more of a face. You know, there's something else there that's, you know, that's not text or numbers. So definitely a way to personalize your profile. So what you're going to do is, for example, this is my video on YouTube. You're going to look up GuideStar's video, there it is, looking, looking great. I'm going to close it. Okay. Now, you don't want this URL. This isn't the correct one. You're going to want to go to share, then embed, because what you're doing is you're embedding this video within your profile. So go to embed. And then what you're going to do is you only want a portion of this link. So starting with HTTPS and going to this kind of mixture of letters and numbers, that is all that we require. So none of this frame border, none of this, everything in between these quotes. So you're going to copy that, you're going to dive back on in here, and then all you're going to do is paste that in, click save, and there you go. Last but not least, the final step, as I warned everyone, was to confirm and publish. So this isn't showing publicly right now. So we're going to go to confirm and publish. Here we are. Going to certify everything is up to date. And then I'm finally going to click finish and publish. So that is perfect. Okay. So hopefully you guys followed along with me, just in case. We're going to run a quick poll here to make sure, there we are, that you guys were able Okay, great. Thank you, guys. So it looks like the majority of you, yes, were successful in uploading a photo. That is fantastic. Some of you said no. Please, please, please reach out to us if you do need additional help. We can offer you some assistance. And for those of you who need more time after this webinar, please feel free to finish uploading. So this was actually one of the questions. If you need help, please visit the GuideStar community. We have thousands of questions that are already answered. We have step-by-step guides on how to complete these seals. So kind of exactly what I just went through, we have in a step-by-step guide format, as well as one day support, one business day support. So please visit the GuideStar community. You can also talk to other nonprofits, you can introduce yourself, and it's www.community.guideStar.org. Okay. A quick wrap-up here, so five steps to a stellar profile. Number one, you really want to keep that profile contact information up to date. That way, if a potential donor wants to get in touch with you, it's very easy for them to do so. Number two, you want to think big picture. Who internally should be able to update your profile? Number three, make sure you always hear from us. So add, you know, that very general email address, info@yournonprofit.org, to make sure that you always have access to your account. Number four, update your profile regularly. So whether it's quarterly, biannually, annually, at least annually, you should definitely be coming in to update your profile. And number five, you can upload your own Form 990 when you have it completed. Those all make for a great profile. Last but not least, you can always share your achievement. So I know we actually answered a lot of questions along the way, but we have a few more minutes to answer just a few more questions. So I'm going to actually bring Jasmine back in here to kind of answer two more questions that are kind of pressing. Okay. So one of the questions is, we're a new nonprofit and we don't have an audited financial statement. Can we still get silver?
Sure. So the way that silver works is that you can either upload an audited financial or you can enter in the information manually. Either is completely fine. If you are a new nonprofit or a small nonprofit, or just don't get audited financials, that's completely fine. And as long as you have at least one year's worth of financial information, feel free to just enter that in and you're at silver and it is ranked the exact same as any other organization's silver ranking. So whether you've put in your audited or you've entered it, you're at the same level.
All right. So another question I'm seeing is, does it cost anything to earn a seal of transparency?
No. So I really love answering this question because I feel like a game show host, but wait, there's more. It's absolutely free. There's no part of the profile that you ever need to pay money to fill out. There's no part that you ever need to pay money to show on your profile. So any other questions that you answer are always available to all the users for free.
Okay. And how long does it take to get to gold and platinum?
That's a great question. I think especially for, I know we had some questions about smaller organizations, whether or not they could invest that time. So it really depends on how much of this work you've already done before. So let's say you've worked through your theory of change, or you've recently done a strategic plan, or even that you've done grant applications and grant wrap-ups. You can use all of that information. We like to say borrow, don't invent for, for the profile. So we don't want you to do extra work that you haven't yet done. That said, people do find especially the gold process really illuminating if they haven't done that work before, because you're taking yourself through those questions. So if you already have it done, you could probably, with some wordsmithing and, you know, however it is that you want to narrow down and copy paste, you could probably get it done in as little as 25 to 30 minutes. And I'd say the same for platinum. So we don't want you to start tracking new things or calculating new things. We want you to use what you've already been tracking and share it. So when GuideStar went through this process ourselves, we went through, we have a public facing dashboard that we like to share quarterly, we went through that. And that was how we chose our metrics. We didn't do any other new things. Now granted, looking through the, the common results catalog and thinking through some of these things made us think about what we want to do in the future, but it was all about what we already do. It can be as little as 25 to 30 minutes for platinum too.
Awesome. Thank you, Jasmine. And we actually do have to wrap up. One last question was, can we preview before publishing?
No. Not now.